At what time do I have here? 6:01 PM on June the 22nd. If you have a dog barking, if you please mute your screen and mute your account until that stops. That would be great. We'll call the Saline City Council Special Work Meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Marl.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh.
Present.
Councilmember CEO.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Dylan.
Here.
Councilmember Del Orko.
Here.
Councilmember Camaro Sulak.
Here.
And Clerk Royal, if you please conduct roll for staff as well, that would be terrific.
City Engineer DPW Director Ford Ice.
Here.
City Treasurer Bennett.
She's muted, but she's here.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Community Development Director Green.
Here.
Police Chief Hart.
Here.
Parks and Rec Director Scruggs.
Here.
Excellent. A quorum is present. We appreciate everyone's time this evening. In light of a number of other meetings that are taking place this evening, we're going to try and make this meeting as brief as possible. Keep it to about an hour, hour and a half. It was a commitment I made to everyone last Monday when we agreed to convene this evening. So we'll transition right now into approval of the agenda. Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh, would you move to approve the agenda as submitted?
Yes, unless there's any agenda item that needs to be added to it.
I don't believe so. It's just a discussion. Okay, that was moved by Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh. Councilwoman Dylan, would you second?
Yes, I will second.
Very good. It's been properly moved and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh and Councilwoman Dylan to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. I would begin with Clerk Royal. Clerk Royal, did we have any comments submitted via Facebook or email in advance of tonight's meeting?
I have not received anything, and I have not gotten my Facebook up and running yet for tonight's meeting, so if they're on there, I don't have them yet.
Okay, well, we'll give you just a moment, and we'll also afford those members of the public who might be joining us to comment. We are unfortunately not able to take verbal comment at this time, but if you'd like to click on the chat icon, which is at the bottom of your screen in the middle, feel free to do so, and you can type in your question or comment. Reference our one discussion item of the evening, which is the transition period, which will be commencing shortly, subsequent to the imminent departure of our city manager. So again, if you'd like to type in a question or comment, please feel free to do so now.
I'll see you.
Well, Clerk Royal, unless you correct me, unless you've received any comments, I'm going to proceed with the one discussion item of the evening.
I have not received anything.
Well, then the record will note that there are no comments during this initial public comment period. However, we will afford the public and any other interested party an opportunity to comment or ask a question at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So we'll transition to the one discussion item, which is this transition period. I'll make note for the record that there were two memos emailed out earlier today, one from myself and one from Councilwoman Dylan. They were emailed, I believe, to everyone's city accounts. If you have not received one or both, please maybe raise your hand and indicate that you have not received them, and we'll make sure to email them out. It appears as though everybody has received the memos from Councilmember Dylan and myself. So let me begin. I'm not going to read my memo in its entirety, but I will speak briefly to my recommendations. And then I'll ask Mr. Gearbaugh, Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh, a comment, and then also Councilwoman Dylan. I should preface, subsequent to receiving Councilwoman Dylan's communicate this afternoon, I did reach out to her, and she and I had an excellent discussion this afternoon and found quite a bit of common ground, so I think this is, I think I'm hopeful that this will be, it'll be easier to develop consensus than perhaps I initially thought. My memo, I think, is pretty clear and succinct. Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh and myself had a conversation with our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green, probably two weeks back. It was a frank and honest discussion, and we inquired whether he had the interest and ability to serve as interim city manager during this period of transition. He indicated with an emphatic and unequivocal yes that he would be interested in that. Subsequent to that, I had a conversation with a number of community stakeholders and went through my personal and city files, and was reminded of a process that was successful here at the City of Saline in the early 1990s and in the late 1990s, between the tenures of City Manager Dave White and Lee Bragoine, and then again between the tenures of city managers Lee Bragoine and Larry Stover, in which a transition team was established of council members and key staff people to discuss operations, policy, and the overall direction of the City of Saline on a weekly basis. Accordingly, I make the recommendation that a transition team be established to meet weekly with the Assistant City Manager. And the names that I'm recommending are enumerated in my memo, which would be the Police Chief, City Treasurer, Parks and Rec Director, along with Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh. Now, based on my conversation today with Councilwoman Dylan, I believe there's value in bumping her up from an alternate position to a regular participant of our transition team meetings, so that three council members would be present and participating on a weekly basis. I also want to touch very briefly on the search for a permanent city manager. So what I would recommend and what I will be bringing before you for action on July 6th is to establish a hiring committee, and the composition would be very similar to what Councilwoman Dylan enumerated in her memo. Three council members, probably two members of city staff. I'm trying to identify another city manager in the greater Washtenaw area who would add that perspective, and I think ultimately enrich the process, to serve on the Hiring Task Force, along with another private citizen, a City of Saline resident, who would have some relevant perspective as well. In addition to that, we would be looking to engage an independent third party to help with a comprehensive search. My understanding would be that the resumes would go to that individual or entity, that they would assist with conducting phone interviews and face-to-face interviews. And it would also be my recommendation that three focus groups take place in advance of face-to-face interviews. I think all of city staff should be engaged on the issue to discuss what qualities and attributes they're looking for in their next city manager. I think each council member should have an opportunity to weigh in individually. And finally, and most importantly, similar to what we did in 2017 with the Police Chief Search, there should be a public forum sometime during the evening on a weekday, affording our constituents the opportunity to attend an organized meeting to discuss what skills and attributes and experience they would like to see in their next city manager. I think all three of those, I think feedback from all three groups is beyond critical. I think it's absolutely essential. So the only thing that I would add is, based on the, in part on the desirability of the Saline community, and also my expectation that the Hiring Committee would move expeditiously, I think it's perfectly realistic to assume that city council as a whole could be interviewing and reviewing candidates for the permanent position sometime later this summer or early this fall. I'll remind you that in between the tenures of Larry Stover and Todd Campbell, Mr. Stover resigned his position at the first week in October 2007. Mr. Campbell was on the job working at City Hall that second week in February. And I think it's important to note that time period because that time period includes Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years, which make it exceedingly difficult to schedule in-person meetings and interviews. So it was essentially four months between Mr. Stover's resignation and Mr. Campbell assuming the position. And again, working hard, working expeditiously, I have every reason to believe that that could be accomplished again in 2020, much like it was in 2007 and 2008. I may have missed a few things, but I didn't want to prolong this. Councilwoman Dylan, was there anything I missed from our conversation earlier this afternoon? You're muted, Janet. I can hear you because you're on the other side of the wall, but I can't hear you on the computer.
Sorry. No, the only other thing was that we talked about the independent third party. For the, this is for the permanent position, doing some like open house style question and answer of different groups of people. And so beyond that, I think that that sort of, you know, enumerates what we had discussed earlier today.
Yep, very good. Mr. Gearbaugh, anything else you'd like to add before I open it up for staff? And then we'll entertain questions and comments from city council.
Just from the approach, when we talked with, I spoke with members of staff, we got their input on how they felt this would be an appropriate way to proceed. They believe that in their roles, for the most part, they're able to handle and, you know, do their own positions and such. But it is that kind of leadership that we need from an interim to, you know, deal with the public and basically handle some of the other issues and bring through to the transition team to help, you know, get the things done during the day. I do appreciate that the mayor and Ms. Dylan have looked at how this approach is. I think it's an appropriate way so that we don't put too much double duties on staff because if we do a number of searches, because we do have three or four searches that are potentially happening at the same time, adding in three or four and having the expectation that a number of staff are going to be able to attend those and council members may be almost too much of an expectation at this time. I think our best bet right now is to focus on a, keeping us, our operations moving forward and, you know, being able to have a staff member feel comfortable that they are appropriate, and we support them and how they move forward and handle their operations. Other than that, I'd rather just proceed and open questions to the rest of council.
Very good. Mr. Green, anything you'd like to add at this time?
Sorry, Mayor, you cut out there real quick.
No, just anything you'd like to add, any perspective that you'd like to share before we transition to city council members?
Yeah, so we can open up the questions real quick. Just for you, city council members that don't know me that well. I have been a manager before, so I understand what this role is like. And then more importantly, we have an amazing team of department heads and staff here at the city. So if we do move forward and you give me the opportunity to be your interim manager for the next few months, I'm fully confident in our ability to keep the city moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Chief Hart, anything you'd like to add?
You know, I'll echo your statements. He and I have had a couple of conversations here in my office, and sorry about that, turn the radio down. Both of them. And I just feel very confident with my teammates here that we're able to really step up and fulfill our obligations here and support Mike and support each other as a team. And I just, I feel very good about the outcome of that for the city and the city council.
Very good. Thank you. Treasurer Bennett, anything you'd like to add? You're muted.
Yeah, so I would just like to say that this will be, I have been through four transition teams for city managers, and to my recollection, each time they appointed an in-house team because the city council felt confident in their leadership and their staff that they have on board to be able to get us to that next level. I love the idea that we have someone like Mike on board that has the past experience from being in that role. I think it would, it's going to be much easier with the great support that we have as a team. Our department heads are very confident, to Mike's point, and I think that we can get this, get this in place and start moving our city in the positive and the direction that we all want to see it go.
Very good. And Director Scruggs, last comments before we open it up for city council.
You know, everyone stole my thunder. Basically, I was going to say that, you know, we have, I'm very confident in this team and that we can work together to keep operations moving forward until we have a city manager in place. You know, we're very, we have a very capable team. We're willing to step into this role. And, you know, it's kind of moments like these that we train for our whole careers, and, you know, to be able to help out in this way. You know, I think everyone's on board, and we're ready to, ready to go.
Very good. Thank you. Let's open it up for questions or comments. We'll start with Councilmember Camaro Sulak and end with councilmembers Dylan and Gearbaugh. Mr. Camaro Sulak, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to start off with, for Mr. Green, can you remind me how long you've been with the City of Saline?
I've been with the City of Saline since the beginning of December, so just over six months.
Over six months, okay. And how long, I don't know all this. I haven't seen, you know, I don't, so take no offense. I'm, I just am curious. How long were you at Three Oaks?
Just over two years.
Two years. Okay, and you were the city manager, or I mean?
Village manager. Yeah, village manager.
Okay. And how many, how many staff members, how many employees reported to you?
Total of 10. Yep.
Okay. And what is their, what is their budget?
It's much, much less than Saline's. If I remember off the top of my head, total all funds was $2.5 to $3 million.
Okay. And what is, what is the population of Three Oaks?
It's a big tourist town, full-time, about 1,600.
Okay. And your experience so far as the Assistant City Manager, you've worked primarily with community development?
Correct.
And how much have you worked hand-in-hand with the city manager?
Well, besides meeting with, yeah, besides meeting with Mr. Campbell on a weekly basis like most staff does, I communicate with him pretty much every single day. And then any projects that he feels like he doesn't have the time to fully commit to would go on to me. And then that's where I would tackle over the past few months. Yeah, the past six months have been a little challenging. It was different, well, circumstances from when I signed up due to COVID. So a lot of our plans initially changed, but we've just taken that with stride, and now we're here.
Right, yes, we definitely are. I have the utmost confidence in our, in our city staff and our department managers. So I'm, I'm very happy that they will be, that they will be helpful. And... Hold on one second. All right, sorry about that. Trying to pick up where I was at. So what do you, what do you feel your strengths are to be able to come into the role?
The biggest one, I believe, it's because I have been a manager before. So I understand what the expectations are, where you have a hand in a little bit of every part of city government. But the biggest part, it's our team. It's I, we're going to have to trust each other through this process. But just having that background of knowing what is going on and everything that goes on with city governments is a huge plus for me.
All right. How do you feel you'd be able to step into a municipal, into a position that you could say is multiple times, five to six times larger staff project size, dealing with, you know, all the, you know, the improvement projects, all the different, you know, from COVID to the, you know, the police department? I mean, we have excellent staff in place, so I know that is a strong backbone. How do you feel that you'll be able to integrate that, you know, from going from a small village to, you know, our city with all the development and infrastructure projects that? I'm just concerned, is it, you know, is it fair to you? I want this to be a win-win for you and for the city. So if you could dive into that a little bit?
Yeah, for me, I'm confident in my ability because essentially everything that's happening here in Saline was happening in the Village of Three Oaks, just on a smaller scale. I had wastewater issues where I came from, where we were looking to upgrade our system. We had understaffed police department. We had roads that we had to take care of. So everything here is just, it's just a multiplier, and it all does, in my mind, take a little more time and be a little more patient through the projects. And then stepping into the role, one of the reasons I came here to be Assistant Manager was eventually, I think the plan would be this would happen eventually. It just happened, happened sooner than we all anticipated, but this was the next logical step, was me filling in interim, and then we go and search for the next city manager.
All right. So when you were, when you were asked by the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, it was probably an easy decision for you to say yes. I mean, I would imagine you were pretty excited.
Yeah, it's one of those bittersweet things. I had a great working relationship with Todd. I was excited to come here and learn from him. It's sad to see him go sooner than I anticipated, but at the same time, it's, it's just a good move going forward.
Right, it's an opportunity for you. How could you say no? You don't want it, but I think that's all that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your question. Councilmember Del Orko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll just be direct up front. I wanted to keep an open mind about this process moving forward, and I want to try to have a thoughtful discussion about weighing the pros and cons of each option, where we anticipate moving forward with the plan of appointing Mr. Green as interim city manager with the assistance of the transition team involving the department heads and contemplating the alternative approach, which would be to seek out the assistance of the Michigan Municipal League to vet other possible candidates for this position. And so saying, Mr. Green, one of the reasons highlighted for moving in this direction was familiarity with the organization. So I was hoping you could comment on how you feel that you have commandeered a familiarity with an organization that you've been part of for six months.
Yeah, like I said, it's not that ideal situation. It would be great if I was here for a couple of years and this happened. But at the same time, being in office every single day and then going through a pandemic with this staff, you learn how this organization is run on a day-to-day, in the good times and in the bad. So having that under our belt, it's a great help for me. And then the fact that all the staff is just willing to share all their knowledge and ask questions, it's just been fantastic.
Okay. One of the challenges we're going to face here is, one of the key positions in the city with Mr. Jeff Fordice is he's going to be working remotely from another location for a period of six months. And I feel the coordinated effort between the city manager and the city engineer, DPW director, is a critical one. And that's one of uncharted territory for us, where we're going to be working remotely with Mr. Fordice to keep projects in the pipeline and moving forward. How do you feel you're going to be able to handle that challenge?
For me, I think it's going to be a relatively easy situation. Naturally, I came from a small town, so if I wanted engineering services, it was go to our contracted engineer that was never on-site. So to me, it's a win-win for the city because we can contact Mr. Fordice whenever we need engineering questions. And the fact that he is familiar, he's familiar with the city, it's just going to make everything so much more streamlined. And then eventually, it's going to be the same situation where I came from, where once Jeff is done working on the contract situation for us, we're going to go to a contracted engineering firm, most likely, and then it's the same situation I've been in in the past. So to me, it's a very logical and should be a pretty seamless transition.
Okay. Well, I think the issue of going with a contracted engineering firm is still one that's very much up for discussion and up for debate. But, all right, and then with the, with the role of Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director, that role was very exclusively carved out for you as an individual through the NOVAC Study Report organizational review. And I understand that there's still a bit of time left before you're able to take on and absorb the capacity of that job description. And I do have reservations and concerns about taking on the role of an interim city manager when you haven't fully realized the working capacity of your job description as it currently is written. So I just want to voice some concerns about having Mr. Green be pulled away from some of the things he was, has been brought here to do, to plug him into this position. And it's nothing personal. It's nothing against Mr. Green. I think you're very eager and young and motivated to rise to the occasion and serve in this capacity. I just want some thoughtful discussion with my colleagues about how we're going to, the role of a Community Development Director is one that was very much needed. And I don't want to see other areas of the job description suffer because now this will be put on your plate, and you'll have a lot of things to coordinate. And I don't want to see anybody stretched too thin. And I also would encourage some, it's a tough call because you have only been here for six months. You were serving a much smaller community. I just, I have a little bit of reservations and turning over this responsibility to someone with a fair bit of experience left to get behind your belt. But I'm not going to hold that against you. I just, I just want to encourage everyone to have a thoughtful discussion about this. And there has been the summary of having, Mr. Marl having a conversation with Mr. Dylan about two different memorandas, two different memos, where I felt there were significant differences between the two. And I still don't really understand where we are in terms of reconciling those differences between the two suggestions. One calls for this position to be limited to a 30-day period of time, where we would then go on to search for an interim city manager position with an RFQ. And the other one pretty much installs you in that position and surrounds you with the transition team to help with, share the responsibility. So I just want to open that up for discussion with everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe I can clarify, Ms. Dylan, and if you want to chime in, if I miss something, please, please feel free to do so at the conclusion of my remarks. So let me, let me take the areas where I think there's, there's broad agreement between Councilwoman Dylan and myself. One is to form a transition team to meet with the interim city manager, whoever that individual may be, on a weekly basis to discuss operations, policy, and the overall direction of the City of Saline. Second, there's broad consensus, of course, to establish, hopefully at our next meeting on July 6th, a search, or excuse me, a Hiring Committee for the permanent city manager position. That group would be assisted by an independent third party that we would contract with, and we would approve that contract also at our next meeting, ideally at our next meeting on July 6th. Assistant City Manager Green has already been evaluating and vetting a number of services. We'll have a recommendation, but we'll also have some additional proposals for you to compare and contrast to our recommendation. One thing that I did not touch on earlier, and I'm looking at Councilwoman Dylan's message now, or her memo now, and I'm in full support of these recommendations, is that the Hiring Committee also review the employment contract for the city manager. I think we've referenced this in the past, that that's in pretty desperate need of revision and tweaking. So that's a task that the Hiring Committee can do. You know, again, to an earlier point, if a Hiring Committee is established and a third-party consultant is hired on the 6th, I believe that that group can work expeditiously and have candidates for us to evaluate and vet by the end of summer, beginning of fall. In fact, my recommendation would be that they make a recommendation to the full council between three and four finalists. And we would have oral boards, very similar to what we did in 2017 for Chief Hart. The main issue of disagreement between Ms. Dylan's memo and mine is engaging an external individual to serve as interim city manager. And that is, with great respect, that is not an approach that I support. I want to engage a talented and competent city employee who has showed an eagerness and willingness to serve in the position and has some familiarity with the personalities and the structure of city government. In addition, I don't think the timing works, and I'll explain why. From the multiple conversations I've had over the years with city staff members, the earliest we could bring somebody on into this organization, it's easier to integrate somebody on the front lines than it is to bring on somebody who's in a managerial position or as city manager. Realistically, that takes about two months, between when you post the position, evaluate and interview candidates, have a tentative agreement, and then conduct a comprehensive background and drug screening. So the point is that if we were going to go the route of an interim city manager, that would likely take between two to three months. We're going to then bring that person on who's not familiar with our organization, not familiar with the personalities and the structure, spend valuable to staff time educating that individual, only to see them leave the organization in likely another month, month and a half to two months. So it seems like a poor allocation of time and resources, from my opinion. However, one thing that Councilwoman Dylan and I discussed- However, one thing that Councilwoman Dylan and I discussed, which I think is a good recommendation, is if we go the route of establishing a transition team, establishing a Hiring Committee for a Permanent City Manager, engaging a third-party consultant and elevating Mr. Green, I do think we should evaluate that at the conclusion of 30 days to see how it's working, to make sure that Mr. Green and the transition team aren't overwhelmed, and also to gauge the progress that the Hiring Committee is making. If for some bizarre reason, and I do think this is bizarre, I use that word deliberately, if we're not getting the kind of applications and interest in the position that we want, then maybe that would be the time to think about a more long-term interim solution and bringing somebody in from the outside. But if we stay on the trajectory that I think we can stay on, I think promoting Mike, establishing this transition team, and concurrent to that, having a Hiring Committee move expeditiously to screen and vet candidates, I think this transition can be handled with relative ease. I don't know if I missed anything there, Councilwoman Dylan.
Oh, I'm sorry. So do you want me to jump in? Mr. Del Orco, I don't want to cut you off. Do you want to continue and then I'll sort of go back and go through my memo?
Sure. I'm happy to yield the floor, but I just want to have a couple follow-up questions before we do that. One key difference that I saw in the memo, and you're preambleled to this discussion, Mr. Mayor, is that Ms. Dylan is recommending two council members, other than the mayor and the pro temp, to serve on the long-term Hiring Committee for the Permanent City Manager. Is that something that you agree with, or are you saying it would only be three council members for that?
No, it's actually something I was very emphatic with Councilwoman Dylan earlier this afternoon. And I spoke to Mr. Girba about this as well. It would not be my recommendation that either Mr. Girba or I serve on the Hiring Committee for the Permanent City Manager. I can't speak for Mr. Girba, but frankly, I have enough on my plate. And that's something I'd like to see other council members empowered to participate on because our hiring process for key positions like police chief or city treasurer or city manager are very comparable. So no, I would not be serving on that. My understanding is Mr. Girba is not interested in serving on that, but we would appoint three other council members to serve in that capacity.
Okay, okay. And just to summarize, my main concerns is, I'll share now what I've shared with many of my colleagues over the last couple of months in contemplating this. I'm much more concerned about the process of the Hiring Committee for the Permanent City Manager and getting that right and vetting that very carefully than I am about the interim situation. The interim situation is a lot less anxiety-provoking for me. So I don't have ultra-strong feelings about one way or the other, but I do feel it was important we have a thoughtful discussion about the pros and cons of each options. And I am very much in favor of involving as many members of council and the police chief, the finance department, and whomever the interim city manager might be, as well as a community member, and make this a team effort and keep transparency open and get everybody engaged and involved. And if it goes down as you described at the outset of this discussion, I think that would be a win-win for everyone involved. But I have to say, my focus is really more vested there than it is on this process that we're talking about today.
That makes sense. Thank you. Let me yield to Councilwoman Mitchell, and then of course, Councilwoman Dylan, if you want to elaborate on your memo, we'll get to you momentarily.
Actually, Your Honor, this is Kristin. I would prefer that Janet go first so that I can hear and the public can hear what she has been proposing in whole.
Janet, would you like to comment?
Sure, that's fine. So basically, my memo outlined three buckets. We have a temporary interim city manager, an interim city manager, and then a permanent city manager. And so just to stick with those three categories, the temporary interim manager, as I proposed, would be Mr. Green. That would be effective July 1st, and it would be for a period of 30 days. And that's to keep continuity with the city. There would be the transition support team created. And to be honest, it would be very similar to the department head meetings that they have now, except you'd have probably, you know, a council member as a part of it. And just, you know, and then there'd be some, you know, some normal actions. There'd be weekly reports out, which the city manager does to council already, things like that. But simultaneously, so there's three buckets, but these are three paths that are moving concurrently. And so at the same time, there would be a search established for the interim city manager. And the reason I propose this is it has absolutely nothing to do with Mr. Green. Please don't take it. It's nothing personal to you. It's actually, my concern is more in, are we setting up our employees to fail by overwhelming them with workloads? Because it's not that Mr. Green is assuming the city manager position. He's actually going to be a dual-role employee. So he's going to be doing his assistant city manager, community development job, as well as the functions of a city manager. You know, in the short term, that's probably okay, but something's going to have to give. And we have such a lean staff that I'm not sure where the overflow can go. So does that mean, what I'm concerned with is, are things going to fall off? Are things not going to happen? And so that's why I don't think it's sustainable long-term, and I had suggested for 30 days. And so as we're moving through these 30 days, we would be looking for, you know, an interim city manager who would fill that gap from, you know, the 30-day mark until the hire of a permanent city manager. And that person is in place to manage the city. They are not going to be reinventing the wheel. There obviously will be a time period for them to get up to speed in doing things and learning the processes of our city. But I'm just afraid, like I said, about keeping Mr. Green in a position too long and, you know, and the burnout factor. And so also, now the third lane of this memo was the permanent city manager position, which we would also be pursuing at the same time. Because right now, we don't know what the market's going to bear as far as a permanent manager, an interim manager. It could be a very quick process. It could be a very long process. I mean, as people may recall, during the hiring process for Mr. Green's position, that was a much longer process than we would have ever imagined it to be. And there were definitely some hiccups along the way. And so we need to look at that and see, you know, this might take longer than a couple of months. And so that was the way that my memo was outlined, was sort of going down these three paths, but simultaneously. Ms. Mitchell, did that answer your questions or open the door to more?
No, I just wanted everybody to have a chance to be able to absorb your memo and keep track of things. So I appreciate you going up to speed. And you had some differences on the transition support team. You had some differences on the Hiring Committee. I guess, can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. And I think the mayor has alluded to, they were sort of similar. The suggestion I had made was that more council members be involved as part of the process. That it was either, like the transition support team, that it was either the mayor or the mayor pro temp. I didn't feel like they both needed to be a part of that, which would open up a window for a council member to be a part of that process. And then I'm trying to, the others, I'm not sure. I think that was really the only difference.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I think that was really the difference to it.
Okay. So, Mr. Green, I just have a couple of questions for you. What is your vision of how the Community Development Director piece is going to be handled? It seems like this is a critical time for that kind of collaboration.
Yeah, so the one good thing about the city manager and the Community Development Director, a lot of it revolves around interfacing with the public. And since that's a big part of what the city manager does, I think that's going to be a very good transition. As for the planning and building department side of the Community Development Department, we have a great staff and we have a great working relationship with CES, Carlisle White Men Code Enforcement Services. So that part, I don't think is going to take a hit at all throughout this entire process.
So, I'm sorry, when you say interacting with the public, what does that mean? I'm sorry.
So part of the Community Development Director role was eventually going to be incorporating the Business Ambassador role and attending various community meetings. That's something the city manager currently does. So just taking on that as a normal process of being the interim city manager will be able to essentially get two birds with one stone.
I see. Okay. And then, you know, one of the things that strikes me is that we now have half a dozen staff members who have left. And without going into employee details, which is rightfully private, it seems to me that there's some work to do in healing and getting the departments and maybe support. Can you talk about how you would handle that situation?
Yeah, my management style is try to give departments as much support as they possibly can need, because if they're happy, it makes my life way easier. So anything I can do as the manager to make their lives easier, make their jobs more effective and efficient, just overall is beneficial to the city. Because if they're able to do their jobs well and they love what they do, it just helps everyone and it makes our transition and working with the public that much easier.
What is your plan for negotiating the labor contract?
Yeah, so I'm going to lean heavily on Steve Gerard with that. I'm going to work hand-in-hand with him to make sure we can get that done and get that moving forward, but I'll rely on him a lot.
I guess if you could be prepared to give council an update.
You went on mute, Kristin.
Sorry. Last thing you had to do without a contract for a year. So maybe next time, you could give us an update on that. So when, I guess one of my concerns with overseeing Jeff Fordice, what kind of, what kind of job site connecting would he need? How do you liaison between various contractors and the engineer?
Yeah, so that's going to rely a lot on myself and Dan Bennett, who will hopefully serve as interim DPW Director. We will be, will most likely be the site contacts, the day-to-day contacts for that. And then any engineering-related questions, we will just have to either contact them directly with Jeff or communicate those engineering questions to them. But to me, that transition shouldn't be that bad. If someone's on-site to answer basic questions and then always just keeping the engineer informed of what is going on, it shouldn't be that big of a deal.
Okay. And then how does the permit, so we have a budget line item to take care of permits. And for those who don't know, we're behind on a number of permits being re-inspected by the city. So what is your plan there?
Yeah, so in the budget, I don't know if you all read the line item. It's contracting that out with CES. For you guys that don't remember what CES is, Code Enforcement Services is a sub-branch of Carlisle White Men that helps us with our permitting process, specifically commercial developments. So they will handle that, and part of that agreement will have some administrative support. So our team's not the one necessarily doing all the digging through our files back to 2009, seeing the outstanding permits. So just managing them throughout that process will be our main role through that.
Okay, so and what type of management do you anticipate that meeting?
It's just oversight. Most likely, any administrative support if they can't find a file helping them do that. And then just keeping a track of how many inspections they are doing, and then making sure it's all updated in our BSNA system.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that. And then I guess this seems like a time when we're negotiating and working with Eagle for the wastewater treatment plant for the state violations. What is your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I've been through an AOC process before, so I know exactly what it's like. So the biggest next step, I think, is we just need a face-to-face meeting with them. So once we're able to knock that out, I think we'll have a good direction moving forward.
And what was the nature of the AOC that you had before?
Early discharge. Where I came from, we have a lagoon system. And with lagoons, if they get too full, and you have to discharge them before your permitted time, and naturally, your samples come back higher than your permit, it can result in a fine. We had that going for a couple of years and it resulted in AOC.
So did you find out about the AOC right when you were hired, or at what point was that happening?
Yep, it was right when I was hired. It was something that happened before I got there, and we got that ball dropped on us. And that's why we were going through the process of upgrading our system right before I left.
Okay, I think those are all the questions I have, Mr. Green. What is your degree in? I guess that's the last one.
Yep, I have a master's in public administration, and then my bachelor's was business administration and legal studies.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, Your Honor, the questions I have are mostly with the transition team. And I'm interested in the makeup of that team. Sorry, Mr. Green, I'm just going to swipe back to the mayor there. So part of Janet's memo had talked about changing the makeup of that team, having either you or the mayor pro temp an additional council member.
What's your question?
So I wondered if you had read that part of the memo.
I did, and I actually commented on it earlier during my opening remarks. And what I would propose as a compromise is elevating Councilwoman Dylan up so that there are three active participating members from city council at each of the transition team meetings.
So, okay, so that's clear. I wasn't sure if you were talking about the hiring or the transition support team. I guess I'm wondering why both you and the mayor pro temp need to be there. And, you know, this is not personal to anyone, but as I wrote in a letter to council, I don't remember a team being made up differently in recent memory. And we don't have any type of rotation. We have two very good new council members. And I think it would be a good idea to bring one of them on board and have some involvement.
Yeah, let me answer that question because that is, factually, that's not accurate. And I actually made a list this afternoon of all of the Hiring Committees or Task Forces work groups that have been convened during my tenure as mayor. Resident Support Services, Drug Task Force, Community Foundation Task Force, Code Enforcement.
I'm so sorry, Your Honor. I was talking about the last six months. I'm talking about the last six months. Are you talking about every committee and task force for the past?
I have the floor. Excuse me. Let me finish. I did not interrupt you. Please do not interrupt me. We went through.
I want to clarify what you're discussing, sir.
Well, let me finish, and then you may ask your question. Medical Marijuana Working Group, Merchant Park Working Group, and the following Hiring Committees: Wastewater Treatment Superintendent, DPW, Police Chief, and City Clerk. I cite those because they indicate they represent a broad cross-section of city council staff and community members serving on these various groups. Do you have a question?
So what of those are in the past six months since we have two new council members?
Well, Medical Marijuana wrapped up late last year. Well, Medical Marijuana wrapped up late last year, DPW director search is ongoing. So two.
Okay, so I guess I would just like to hear your thoughts on some type of rotation for council members because it seems like we're getting locked into a pattern.
But not at all, but I'm happy to respond to that. So I would also note, and Councilwoman Dylan and I discussed this earlier today, I believe on July 6th, I'll actually be presenting for council consideration, three different groups to be appointed and established. A transition team, a hiring committee, and then, as I've discussed, I believe the last three meetings, a risk mitigation working group. And I think what you'll find is broad representation from not only city council, but also from staff in the community on each of these three groups. So I'm very mindful of each of them and my goal is to achieve broad diverse representation from council, staff, and the public.
Okay, so what is the makeup of the risk management team?
I don't have all of the members confirmed right now, but it appears as it's going to be Mayor Pro Tem Girbott and Councilmember Dell Orko, for sure.
And then, does Mr. Camaro Sulek have any committee or hiring positions at this point?
I've asked Mr. Camaro Sulek and I believe I've gotten consent for him to serve on the permanent hiring committee for the city manager's position.
Okay. I guess my concern, Your Honor, is that this is such a critical time for businesses that I think they need the support of our community development director.
Any additional comments?
What is your plan to address that?
I think Mr. Green has been very emphatic on that, which Mr. Girbott and I chatted with him about this. He feels confident that with the support of the transition team and staff, he can do both roles. And hopefully, you know, and council knows, in my capacity as mayor, I'm certainly willing to step up to the plate and do more to support businesses, especially during this critical period.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm all done with my questions.
Mr. Seal, any questions or comments?
Several of each, Your Honor. First of all, in note of all the different positions that are about to be appointed and so on, I would recommend to, I stand willing and able to serve on any of the committees you deem are appropriate. Never do these things take place at an active time. I think in terms of what the timing is for the city of Celine, this takes places as good a time as could happen. Mike Green has been in position now for about six months. I've been very pleased to see the kind of work he does, the kinds of reports that he's submitted to council, and the kinds of recommendations that he's made to council for various problems that he's come up with so far. So I couldn't be more pleased with having Mr. Green in place where he is and being satisfied with the kind of work that I feel that he does. So I feel very confident with him going forward. I also see the continuous appointment of another committee, another committee, another committee, spending another bucket of dollars, another bucket of dollars, another bucket of dollars, who we simply don't have anymore. There's a lot of talk at this last budget about spending money for attorneys and so on because of all the kinds of things that we are facing. To me, this is just another one of those here we go again situations where we consider that solving our problems is done so by creating another committee and throwing another bunch of cash in the door. I don't think that's the case. And I think we need to do this as expeditiously and as economically as possible, not only ourselves but for the citizens. We find along the way that things are not working well and that there needs additional help, and I think we pause, we go back and redo things. But in the interim, I think we go forward as you've designed. And that's all I have to say, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Seal. Councilwoman Dylan, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. Just for some clarification, like I said, I'm not sure where this, the idea that throwing money in committees is coming from because I just think that we're trying to get down this path where we need to get to an end result. We're not sure how long it's going to take to get there. And so what my proposal was is to just keep moving everything forward at the same time. Because I am just, you know, a little wary that we are being aggressive and overly optimistic with our timeframes. And so I don't want to, it has nothing to do with Mr. Green. Obviously, I'm in favor of installing him into this temporary interim position immediately as of July 1. It has nothing to do with his abilities. It's just an overlapping of workloads. And there's just only so many hours in a day and, you know, jobs still have to get done. And so we do need to keep moving forward. And the idea of the transition support team was something that's always been in place from what I understand. And like I said, it's more of almost like the department meetings that currently happen, except the council member will be a part of it. And then the hiring committee, you know, is always, you know, is always a part of the process for the city. So I guess I don't have any other questions at this time. And as far as, you know, comments, you know, I do stand by the proposal that they submitted to the group. I think that it's in the best interest of the city to move forward on all avenues because what I don't want to do is come to the 30-day mark and realize that Mr. Green is overwhelmed or that there's other issues that have come up where he's not going to be able to continue on in that capacity at that current level. And so we wouldn't want to lose that 30 days if we do need to look at it for an interim. You know, if it's, you know, if you're going down a path and as to hire your permanent and you're seeing that, well, there could be some hiccups in the road, we need to have something to fall back on should Mr. Green not want to continue on longer term in the dual role.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Girbott, any additional comments?
Just from the perspective of, I think, my own observations right now. When we mention experience and we look at a number of those aspects, I mean, I look from my own perspective in the mayors and other members of council. I've had, you know, more than a decade of experience and understanding and having been exposed to these type of operation hiccups and a number of the interviews and those type of things that we proceeded forward. Also, having served as an interim director in a number of positions from different aspects in my own personal career, I've learned that from the most perspective, you need to understand what your staff are capable and what they're willing to do. And I think in this approach, I was most impressed from the perspective of each of the members willing to move forward and doing this because often the time you have individuals that decide, no, this isn't what they want to do. They're concerned about, you know, their own issues and things like this. And I, from the perspective of these individuals wanting to step forward in the transition team, I think it's great. From Mr. Green's perspective, he's shown that he has some of the experience that we are, you know, facing and dealing with. Does he have 30 years of experience? No. But does 30 years of experience necessarily equate to having the experience of every single aspect? It doesn't. Some of it is learning on the job. And from that perspective, I'm glad that Mr. Green is willing to step forward on this. As to overwhelming, you know, council made the decision to accept Mr. Campbell's resignation. So a lot of this aspect is based upon our own decision to do that. And so we need to understand that as council members, we're going to have to reprioritize. And yes, things are going to have to come off the table, not fall off the table, but come off the table. And the most qualified individuals are going to be in the transition team. And I think that helps address those concerns that have come up. When I look at the timeframes and, no disrespect for Ms. Dylan's proposal, there's a number of simultaneous searches that are going to be occurring with the same people for two identical positions. And that's why I think I've supported the mayor's approach in that we stay focused on the city manager. That is really key to us. We have to have that position filled. We know we've addressed the city manager, I mean, excuse me, the DPW services. And in terms of community development, we've been blessed with the fact that we've had Celine Main Street help support us. If perhaps we could maybe work some other additional perspective with them or how we can bring in the Chamber of Commerce because I think those are the key support groups that the community is really looking towards. And that's how we would address that. So at this point in time, we're going to need to look at the full community to help us make sure that we're successful and can move forward. And then, I mean, I think really the perspective is, is I understand the other members and how they feel that, you know, this is going to be putting some additional responsibilities on individuals, but hopefully it's a short term. I believe all of us, no matter who are on council, wants to have this position filled with the most qualified candidate. And like anything else, we've been concerned in the past about things dragging out. So this is our time to shine, that we can get this done, we can get in the aspect of it, we can have our group that's assigned to do the city manager thing, bring forward the recommendations, they'll be able to actually also work towards developing whatever kind of public interactions that we have. A number of those ideas, I think, are excellent because that's what we want to have going forward with any kind of hire in these director positions because that's our attempt to try and achieve some of the goals that I think the community are now moving and asking forward. I don't have a lot of other, I don't really have questions. I'm just kind of showing my own consideration and how I've looked at this. And I really want to believe that, you know, we do have a lot of things going on, but we are capable with the people that we have because we put our trust in them and we believe that they can move forward. And if we do have the interim checks, even talking with the staff, they've mentioned about ways to improve communication they feel that they can do. There's ways of providing updates from perspectives of how they would report to us. A number of the things that I think council have addressed already and Mr. Green is willing to lead that charge and do so. And what's great is that he's part of a team already. So we don't necessarily have to delay and then wait for another individual to come in and try to build that culture at this point instead of just, you know, waiting until we have our permanent person. And so, Mr. Mayor, I don't really have anything else further to say, but that's just how I'm approaching this aspect at this time.
Very good. Let's do, I'm just going to limit this next round to questions. If you have any additional questions for staff or myself, and then I'm going to try and get consensus on each of the three points. So a transition team, a permanent search for a city manager, and how we handle the interim period. So, Mr. Camaro Sulek, any additional questions for anyone?
Yes, I do. And I brought this up in the past as far as utilizing the services of the Michigan Municipal League as well. They're a well-known and respected organization that we belong to and rely on. And they have a free-of-charge interim city manager list of candidates that are available and available immediately. And there are at least eight that range from 13 years of experience to 42 years of experience. And while years of experience don't necessarily equate, that is, oftentimes, many of them have experience with multiple municipalities, work environments. And there is no charge to look at their resumes. All their information is easily available and I've pulled them up and I've talked to the municipal league and there's a lot of flexibility with bringing a interim city manager on as performance-based, hourly. We could have somebody for a month, two months, six months. There's a lot of flexibility there. They could even be, you know, 20 hours, 30 hours, 40 hours a week where somebody could be in place as quickly as 30 days. And that is from speaking to the municipal league, one of their head recruiters. We would have to, we would have to spend some time. I'm not saying that it's just an easy plugin, but I think we need to be open to other options. And this is an option where after, you know, depending on how the first 30 days go, that I think we should look into this because this is not going to cost us anything. And it's a known, well-respected quantity. And all their information is readily available on the website. And I think it's imperative that we look at the different options because we have such a, you know, bizarre times. We don't know what's going to happen with, you know, there's so many unknowns, more than, more than normal. And I hope, as well as the rest of my colleagues do, that this will go smoothly. But it took some time. I don't know how long it took for Mr. Green to be hired. But I'm concerned about making too many assumptions that it's going to, it's going to be, that it's just going to be a few months. There's no guarantee for anything, but it won't cost us anything or hurt to utilize the Michigan Municipal League. So I implore my colleagues to give that consideration and look at that in part of the second, the second tier for a interim while we work for a, work towards a permanent staffing for our city manager position. I think that would provide us with the most experience. And that person is not going to be changing policy. They have a breadth of experience where they can handle the duties that they need to. They've been there, they've done that. And no disrespect to Mr. Green, but, you know, six months with the city, he's gotten to know the city staff. You know, it's not ideal with not being everybody located at City Hall. So there's some strain there. Nothing, nothing has been ideal. If anything, it would be prudent to have plans that things could take longer. Because of COVID, because of the market, because of all the hiring that we have going on and looking for a city engineer, the DPW director, staff for policing. There's so many needs that we have. I find it, I don't, I'm worried that we're not putting Mr. Green in a position to succeed or the city because he can't be in two places at once. He's going to be having dual roles and some things will overlap. And I really appreciate his enthusiasm and desire. But we don't have enough of a proven track record and I'm not holding that against him. But I think in the best interest of the citizens, our taxpayers deserve the best coverage we have. This is our lead person managing, managing the city and allocating two positions at one time to Mr. Green and as well as department managers and staff helping out. You know, I also feel that there's the other side of the coin where the, who's to say that an interim coming in would have a lot better grasp of the job and how to work with department heads and the challenges that we're seeing, while not exactly over, you know, 18, 29, 32, 40-some years. I think there's a lot of value in that and I don't think that should be discounted. So I'm willing to look into it some more because I think it's a very viable option that's not going to cost us, that's not going to cost us anything. It may cost us simply in some background, some background checks and a drug test. Nothing's going to be simple, but it's not going to be as difficult as what some of my colleagues believe it's going to be. And so I really think that's something that we need to look in and give some serious consideration. And, um, so I really think that's something that we need to look in and give some serious consideration. Because after I've talked to a couple of people at the MML, uh, it's, it's doable that we could have somebody in place sooner than, sooner than we think. Have we done this before? Have we ever hired anybody through the MML? That we have experience, that we have precedent on how long it takes to hire? Not to my knowledge. So I caution my colleagues not to make too many assumptions. And...
Thank you. Mr. Del Arco, any questions?
Yeah, I, I think a lot of thought went into both of the proposals and the memoranda that came through this, uh, this morning. I think they both have merit. And when I reflect on each of them, what I see from Ms. Dillon's, uh, summary and proposal moving forward is a compromise of the two. Where we're adopting a lot of what was suggested, Mayor Marl and Mayor Protem Gierba's recommendations with some minor tweaks along the way. One thing that we've faced criticism for as, um, in the acceptance of Mr. Campell's resignation is that we didn't have a firm, uh, plan in place or an exit strategy moving forward. And I, I think quite the opposite. I, I think the, the contingency planning that, uh, Ms. Dillon's memoranda shows is that in the, in the event that Plan A, Plan A doesn't work out, we have something moving in the direction of Plan B. I, I view it as contingency planning. I, I view it as, um, the mentality of, uh, plan for the worst, um, but hope for the best. And in moving forward with Mike Green, we are hoping for the best. And I like what Mr. Green had to say about his approach to management. Successful organizations, um, have good leadership through supportive management and empathy. And I'm hearing a lot of that come from Mr. Green. Playing department heads to their strength and allowing them to do their jobs without being micromanaged is going to be key to this process moving forward. And I, I think that's something we have an opportunity to execute, uh, through this process. Um, I'm certainly in favor of, uh, moving forward with giving Mr. Green the, a shot at this for 30 days. And I think limiting it to 30 days provides us with the opportunity to exercise Plan B in the event that we find that things aren't working out as we would hope and that there are deficiencies and, and we have a way forward. That allows us to perhaps pursue the merits of, of using a third party such as MML or any other, um, interim city manager, uh, runner-up. So to summarize, I, I, I think that leaving the door open, keeping an open mind and keeping our finger on the pulse about it, evaluating this process as we've grown, is a good idea. And again, I just want to reiterate, my, my focus and main attention is on getting the hire of the, uh, permanent installed city manager right. And I, I'm going to keep a, a very close eye to how that process moves forward. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. When Mr. Camero Sulek was speaking, I thought it was interesting that he used the phrase "build-in success." And I, I guess, I hadn't really thought of Mr. Green's position in that way, but I, I think asking him to do this is a lot. I know he's excited about it. Just going from overseeing 10 people to 60 is a lot. We don't know what's to come. So I, I guess I'm looking at Ms. Dillon's suggestion, um, to get on an interim right away while we're doing this 30 days and, and thank Mr. Green for his time. Uh, adopt his extra pay as a stipend rather than considered salary to avoid any confusion. I'm ready to go forward with, uh, Ms. Dillon's proposition.
Mr. Seal?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, it seems like adopting Ms. Mitchell's, Ms. Dillon's position, I think, would be like taking one step forward and two steps backwards. Uh, I, I would think that we should move forward to your plan, Mr. Mayor's, as written, as originally defined, uh, until we get to a point where Mr. Green, in conjunction with the others he's working with on the committee, would come forth and say, you know what, we do need, we do need some help here. And maybe go back and look at some of those positions like Mr. Del Arco and Mr. Camero Sulek have defined. And that would be to go to the Michigan Municipal League for help. And anytime I've worked in an organization where they've been trying to hire a new boss, so to speak, and in the meantime they brought in an interim, it's been one of two things. They've either totally stymied any progress in the meantime or they've killed the incentive of the employees to do anything at all to be asked to the interim because they know that he's short-lived. So, I don't know, I guess I have enough bad experience in my mouth, uh, from past positions like that that I would be against it at this time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dillon, anything you'd like to add?
Sure that there's anything I need to add at this point other than to make mention of what Mr. Camero Sulek had, had mentioned about, um, working through MML or another, um, source for an interim. Um, I did outline that also, um, in the memo, that that would be sort of one of the tracks that we would be pursuing. What I don't want to do is wait until there's a problem, um, and be back into that reactive mode. That's the part that, that causes me to pause right now. Um, I have all the faith in, in the world in Mr. Green right now. Um, he has not done anything to show me that he is not able to do this job at this point. My thing is the sustainability of that. And so that is why I think that, you know, we need to be looking at other options at the same time. So that if there is a time when he says, Uncle, you know what, I can't do this anymore, we've, we're ready to step in and say, okay, then you know what, we vetted this other option and this is a direction we can go. It may be that we are able to put the hiring committee for the permanent, in a perfect world, everything lines up and we're hiring into that position in three months. And everything is, is great. But that's, that's a big if. And so I don't want to be in a position where we're trying to backpedal to, to fill in.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gierba, anything you'd like to add? You're muted.
As I look at this, you know, council wants to make plans for every single contingency that may be out there. We don't have time to do that. There's aspects that have been stated that are not correct because if you read the MML's posting, they will not do any of the background check, any of the other aspects which are. So now we're going to be assigning that to somebody, other individual. I mean, if council members are going to step forward and do those aspects while the rest of staff performs their actual duties, you know, that makes sense. But we know that's not the case and that's not how this will be approached. We either as leaders and elected officials try to make the best decision for right now based on all the information that we have to move us forward or we continue to rehash the issues that we're doing right now. And again, I would like to ask, out of all these conversations, how many members of council have spoken directly with our department directors, with Mr. Green prior to this meeting to understand where they see their concerns or their willingness to do this job? We have a number of individuals that are making assumptions based on information that I'm not sure what was gathered from. There's assumptions from your perspective, but not necessarily from the individuals that are performing the work and want to move forward. So at this perspective, I'm supporting the original motion. We will continue to evaluate Mr. Green as we evaluate every single employee based on how we handle them in any other position. And we will move forward. We will have to set aside some aspects of what we want to be done. We cannot do it all. We cannot. We know that. We have allowed too much stuff to be put on the plates of our staff and we need to make sure that we get the correct things done at this point in time. And I'm trying not to be, um, frustrated with this, but I kind of am. This is how we've been dealing with issues for the last six months. We need to move ahead and move the city forward. Let's just kind of give some credit to the individuals who really do the work. We're just here to make sure that, you know, we can give them some policy and guidance. Let's not second guess them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So let me try to develop consensus on these, on these three points. And I'll, I'll just add, and I've, I've made this statement at, at nauseam during the course of my, my tenure as mayor. But I have, I have great, uh, trust and confidence in the ability of our staff, both the folks on the front lines and those in mid-management and in managerial positions. And I, I think this transition team, working alongside our interim city manager, community development director, who has a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of talent and some relevant experience, that, uh, this process can be, can be productive and ultimately beneficial to the city and to the residents of, of Celine. Tell me if you object to this, but this is what I'm hearing and I'm trying to broach some sort of compromise. So I think there's broad consensus on the, the, the third issue, which is to establish at our July 6 council meeting, a hiring committee for the permanent city manager position and to work alongside a consultant that would do engagement with both the community staff and council and also rewrite the employment contract, uh, for the city manager. Does anybody object to that?
Your Honor, this is Kristin.
Please.
I would suggest that we use HR sources to write the contract rather than the people listed.
Okay. Uh, I, I don't have a problem engaging HR on that as well. My personal preference is I would like the hiring committee to, to review that and make a formal recommendation to city council, but doing that in conjunction with HR would be fine. Mr. Gierba?
Um, no, I'm fine with that. I mean, we're going to ask for proposals, I thought, from what our agencies are out there. So they would probably describe how they would attack this process anyways, because it should be a, um, you know, a bid.
Right.
But I'm for, um, what are you looking for, Mr. Mayor, in terms of?
No, I'm just looking for, for, to make sure there are no objections to, uh, establishing at our, at our next meeting in, in the form of a motion. Of course, there'd be debate and discussion, um, establishing a hiring committee for the permanent city manager with individuals with a, uh, uh, let me pull up Mrs. Dillon's email. Basically, the structure of the committee would be very similar, if not identical, to what was enumerated on Councilwoman Dillon's, uh, message earlier today. And that we would be working with an outside consultant to help screen and vet candidates.
Yeah, perfect. I'm fine with that.
No one's an object, no one objects to that. Okay. Then the second point that I want to get consensus on, and again, this would need to be approved and debated publicly at our next meeting on July 6. Any objection to establishing the transition team as enumerated on, on my memo?
I'm not comfortable with that at that time, Your Honor. This is Kristin.
Okay, any other objections? It looks like we have consensus to move forward on that. Okay. Then the final point would be, um, seems like there is, uh, broad consensus to at least designate, um, the assistant city manager as the temporary city manager. I, I have no objection to having the transition team, which will now include Councilwoman Dillon as a, as a full member, evaluate, um, the information that MML has along with others regarding potential candidates for an, regarding potential external candidates for the interim city manager position. I do want to be very clear though, barring some sort of miracle, you are not going to get a person in here in 30 days. It is not, not possible. And I'm, I'm not trying to be rude or argumentative with people. I'm just trying to explain that when you post a position, evaluate candidates, negotiate a benefit package and do a drug screening, a comprehensive background. And you need to do a comprehensive background for a city manager's position. That's not going to be completed in a month. So I'm happy to look at that and I think the, the consensus is for council or for the transition team to look at that. But I, I want to be very clear so that there's no misunderstanding that, that is not going to transpire in three days.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I am not at all in favor of trying to hire an interim city manager while we're moving forward with Mr. Green as the acting interim city manager.
Okay. And I, I'm a, I don't mean to put him on the spot. I assume that, Mr. Gierba, your position mirrors that of Mr. Seal. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's mine too, but I think there's four votes that at least want to, to evaluate that. And so I, I have to be mindful of what the majority wants, not necessarily what, what, uh, what, what my personal position is. So unless the other four object, what I would recommend then is that the first transition team meeting that we begin to, to look at, uh, a, a possible candidates and a process for a external interim city manager.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I recommend that we assign that to potentially not the full transition team, but perhaps to the, um, maybe the council reps and maybe one other council rep to assess that MML thing.
Okay.
Unfortunately, if we had three members or four members, that will need to be a, an open public meeting. But at this point, I think there's concern about not having enough representation on that meeting. And I would like to not necessarily take away all the time from our transition team and focusing on their, um, their, um, projects at this time.
Recommendation. Yeah, let's do this, Mr. Gierba. I want to discuss it briefly at the transition team just to make sure there aren't any other resources available to us to help identify potential candidates. And then we can discuss who among the council reps is interested in serving in that capacity. And then we can follow up and engage the full group to see if there's individuals who want to help vet, uh, in, in search for candidates. Does that sound reasonable? Mr. Gierba?
Yes.
Uh, and then unless there's objection from, from council, because of course this would need to be voted on, 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 on July the 6th, I would like to, um, I'd like to have the transition team start meeting, uh, a- a- as my memo reflects. I think they should start meeting weekly and I think, uh, in, in, in anticipation for the city manager's imminent departure, um, they should be meeting immediately. So I'd like to schedule a meeting, uh, for this week and next, which will, which will predate our, our next council meeting, unless there's objections from the group.
Your Honor, I would like to say something.
Please.
Mr. Gierba, I, I hear you when you say that some of the council members haven't talked to department heads. And respectfully, when have we had that opportunity? My interest is that we are much more open and, you know, we have reports going around. We have discussions that, you know, I can call you and we can have a discussion about that. That's my expectation. Um, and so if, if you're wanting to make sure that everybody's on the same page, then let's get on the same page. I'm, I'm really happy to do that. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you.
May I respond to that?
Any response? Yep, please.
I guess I need clarification from that because, um, a couple of council members can talk to a director. They just can't give them direction. So, um, some of the assumptions that I think are being made aren't based on true conversations with those individuals. But, you know, I agree, we need to be on the same page. And, and hopefully most of our discussions can happen in public where we're definitely documenting those things and not necessarily in a side conversation or necessi- uh, multiple side conversations or in aspect of, um, you know, not meeting the Open Meetings Act. So I do agree. And in that perspective, that's why I like to keep most of my conversations within our meetings. Thank you.
I'm greatly relieved to hear that, sir.
Mr. Del Arco, did you care to make a comment?
Yeah, I just want to echo some of those concerns. I, I would hate to think that anyone is relegating, uh, members of council's concerns to conjecture or assumptions when we are doing due diligence to study these problems, to understand the issues at hand. Our opportunities to speak with Mr. Fordice, uh, at our last meeting were very transparent and he was a department head. And I was able to learn a lot from my conversations with him at that time and through my conversations with you, Mr. Gierba, during a telephone call that we had about the importance of making that decision moving forward. I am not at the dais or, um, an active member of council not participating, not participating in this process to reach out to department heads. I would be more than grateful for the opportunity to sit down and, and interview Mr. Green for, um, understanding of his willingness and preparedness to take on this role. It, we, a memo was circulated this morning. The conversations had already taken place and I was not invited to participate in that process. So I just want to make that clear at this time.
Thank you. Well, I think I speak for Mr. Green and you can correct me if I'm wrong. But if any council member wanted to, to chat with you about your experience, your vision and your expectations for this transition period, I'm sure you would welcome that.
Yeah, that is correct. Awesome. I'm, I'm glad I got clarification on that because I, I view that as an opportunity moving forward to reach out to department heads and, and sit down with them for conversations and, and, and meet with members of the Department of Public Works, with the Department of, the Police Department, with wastewater treatment plant and have thoughtful discussions with boots on the ground and, and develop their point of view and perspective and, and not be beholden to a ethics policy that prohibits me from doing so. and not be beholden to a ethics policy that prohibits me from doing so.
Yeah, just to be clear, ethics policy does not prohibit any council member. You should feel free and able at any time to reach out to a department head to set up meetings or conversations. In fact, I think you and I may have discussed that previous council member, Del Arco. I welcome that because the goal and the standard that we should strive for at meetings is coming prepared to vote and debate on enumerated action items, which means we take ample amount of time to address our questions and concerns to the appropriate individuals or groups in advance of meetings. So you have my assurances that if you reach out to department heads to meet or to have a conversation, that that is encouraged and supported. And I want you to get all the information that you need to make an informed decision.
And Your Honor, this is Kristin. I just, if we got a memo this morning, we have no opportunity to do that. So I would like just more preparation time and to do as you advise.
Well, but I would make, I appreciate that, but I would make a distinction that tonight was just a discussion, there was no formal action taken. So this, you know, there'll be a vote, multiple votes actually on July the 6, which gives folks an additional two weeks actually to gather questions and concerns if they have them. So thank you for that comment, though. Mr. Camaro Sulek, did you have something additional that you wanted to add?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to reach out to Mr. Green and other staff to discuss information prior to meetings. Definitely don't want to take time away from their busy schedules. But I think that would be invaluable to gain a better understanding into this. And I'd like to be part of more of the conversations, you know, as we go forward in the hiring process and as, you know, like how this memo was formed. A lot of information that we're being put before us and a lot of difficult decisions. So I look forward to reaching out and having some meetings and conversations with the city staff. And I by no means have tried to make any assumptions that were not founded. And I appreciate both of these proposals and the opportunity to be able to discuss them in front of the whole council body. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, well then, Mr. Green, perhaps you and I can chat tomorrow, but let's try and send out an email to the transition team and start setting up weekly meetings. There appears to be no objection to that, okay?
Sounds good, sir.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing further to be discussed this evening, we have just the one discussion. I know, I do appreciate everyone's time and flexibility. This was a good discussion. I'm glad that everybody could, we could find a time in which everybody could meet. Clerk Royal, we're going to transition to our second public comment period. I understand from what appears on my screen that we do have one comment. Did you receive any others during the course of our meeting this evening?
Yes, I have several.
Okay. Would you like to?
Before we move into public comment, may I just ask one other question?
Quickly, yes, please.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the other key piece to this right now for the success for Mr. Green that I want is to make sure that we are identifying the priorities, the immediate priorities of the city manager position, the city staff and the city council, so that he's going into this understanding what the needs are. And we establish that for him because I absolutely want him to be successful in this. And I think that that's going to be a very key element. So I want to make sure that there is a smooth transition. And if there's an opportunity, I believe you had mentioned that the city manager was providing some information. But I think it would be really also very important for department heads as to what's really on their radar, what's at the top of their list right now. And as well as council, what do we feel like needs immediate attention? And so that, then we can take all of that and prioritize it. So it isn't overwhelming and we can be somewhat systematic in how we go forward.
Yeah, thank you for that. Mr. Green, I indicated to the city manager earlier today, he had drafted late last week, in fact, he may have been tweaking it yet this morning, to compile in writing all of the major outstanding issues that staff and council need to be made aware of, excuse me, and/or issues in which key staff members need to be debriefed on. Did you receive that communicate from the city manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you, between you and the other department heads that are here, can you all take a look at that, make any additions? And perhaps, Mr. Green, by early next week at the very latest, if you could send that out to council? So it would be Todd's memo, Mr. Campell's memo, along with any additional thoughts or issues added by department heads for council to review. And then, of course, council members, you are free to respond or to add things. And maybe we can add that as a discussion item at our next meeting on July the 6.
Yes, sir, we'll work on that.
Okay. So maybe close the business next Monday, Mr. Green. I would like something disseminated to city council.
I'm good.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Clerk Royal, if you'd like to begin with reading the public comments.
All right, the first one's from Heidi McClellan and she states, "Staff is a great team. I appreciate the way they take on challenges and meet them with professionalism. Experience tells me they are an amazing, talented, patient and resilient group who goes above and beyond for the citizens of Celine. Just wanted to say that I appreciate it." Bernard Miller stated that we should flatten the curve. Excessive levels of management, all chiefs and no Indian. You are fiscally and morally responsible to the taxpayers. Peter Ruffner, he had several, so I put them all together. He had an observation, "The path suggested by Councilwoman Dillon appears to require more work and more money than needed. Very thankful for the Mayor Marl's leadership. Appreciate how you are engaging fellow councils. Sounds like a good opportunity to develop a young leader, especially with having strong city leadership around him for the short term." Darren McCluskey, "I must say, my only interactions with Mr. Green have been incredibly professional, punctual and properly directed." Tran Longmore stated that, "Can you tell us how the search for a deputy police chief, human resource manager, DPW director, engineer may fit and what those timetables might look like?" And finally, Claudia Muscovici said to me, "It makes most sense to focus on the search for city manager and have Mr. Green assume the interview inter-internal position until a person, permanent city manager, is found."
Very good. And we appreciate all of those comments. It's a nice eclectic mix. That's marvelous. Thank you all for your thoughts. I'll ask one last time if there are additional comments or questions that community members or stakeholders would like to ask. Please click on the chat icon at the bottom of your screen and you can type in your comments. I think it was Mr. Longmore who asked, or whose citizen comment included some questions. Chief Hart, can I put you on the spot? Do you want to make a brief comment as to where you're at with filling the deputy chief's position?
Yes, sir. We've had three applications and we have interviews that we're trying to schedule for this Thursday and Friday. I have one confirmed for Friday and I hope to have the other two scheduled for either Thursday afternoon or Friday.
Very good. And Ms. Bennett, you and I chatted last week about having a follow-up conversation with Sage about the HR position. Any update on that?
Yes, so Sage, Mike and I have met with Sage and they are going to be submitting a proposal for an HR contract. And I believe we were also getting, we were thinking that we probably need to submit that out to others as well. So we're in that process.
Very good. And the last position was DPW director. I can comment on that. So of course, the consensus at the last meeting was to keep Mr. Fordyce on for six months as city engineer. We'll be reposting the DPW director position as just a DPW director without the engineering aspect. And there is a task force or a hiring committee, excuse me, that has been working for the better part of two or three months to fill that position. That group will continue. But at our next meeting, we'll swap the city manager out, the current city manager, Mr. Campell, and replace him with our acting city manager, Mr. Green. So I hope that clarifies and addresses your questions and concerns, Mr. Longmore. He's saying thank you, so I assume that it does. Marvelous. One last opportunity for citizen comments this evening. Okay, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:40. Councilmember Camara Sulek, would you make that motion?
Motion to adjourn at 7:40.
Mr. Seal, would you second?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded by our council colleagues, Camara Sulek and Seal, to adjourn. All those in favor?